Good afternoon and welcome. I'm John Colmell, pleased once again to chair this joint authority and canal board meeting. With me are my fellow trustees Tracy McKibben, Dennis Trainer, Mike Balboni, B Gonzalez, as well as Justin Driscoll and his members of his leadership and other management team members scattered about. Obviously, we're conducting this meeting virtually. With all of that, this meeting has been scheduled and duly noticed as required by open meetings law. And I will now formally call it to order. For some logistical and travel issues need to flip the sequence of our meeting around from what was otherwise noticed. After a brief executive session, we'll come back and have each of our committees report out. We've got audit, we've got governance and finance, all of whom have met over the last couple of weeks. And we have some important matters to bring forward for formal board approval as a result of those sessions. So we're going to lead off with those. Follow with our consent agenda and then we'll move back into the management presentations on strategy, canals, operations, finance, DEI and other matters. So everything that was posted will be covered just in a little different sequence. So if I could, I'd ask for a motion that will approve what I just directionally talked through and I'll assume Karen otherwise captured.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, third and the fourth in there. Just to confirm, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, adopted, I mean amended agenda adopted. Our contractors list, just want to confirm, we've all had the opportunity to review and ensure there's no conflicts and.
There is. Chairman, I'd like to note that I do have one, one conflict that I've noticed department. I mean Karen for there's one, one firm that I cannot vote on. So.
And so you've, you'll advise Karen or make sure you have.
I have advised her. I have advised. Yeah, no, so that one vote.
All right. Thanks very much, Michael. Appreciate that. Um, all right. With that, as I've said, we'll start our meeting with a brief executive session. Could I have a motion to conduct that session in accordance pursuant to section 105 of the public officers law?
So moved.
Uh, moved, Michael, second, Dennis, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed motion carried? We will move to exec session and be back with you all as soon as possible. Thank you. Uh, welcome back, everyone. If I could, ask for a motion to resume, resume our meeting in open session.
So moved.
Thanks, Michael. Second?
Second.
Second, Tracy, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed motion carried? We're back in open session and as always, pleased to state that no votes were taken during executive session. As I said, we're going to, excuse me, start with our committee reports. Then over the last 10 days or so this morning included, we had three very good and interactive committee meetings. This morning was audit chaired by Dennis Trainer and Dennis, I'd ask you to kick us off with your report, please.
Thank you, John. Uh, the audit committee met this morning, Wednesday, the March 22nd, 2023, and adopted the minutes of the December 13th, 2022 audit committee meeting. And the following items which are now before the trustees for adoption. Committee also received the report on and approved and recommended adoption of the authority's year end 2022 consolidated financial report, which will be adopted separately in a consent agenda. Under the 2022 financial reports pursuant to section 2800 of the pub, of the public authorities law and regulations of the Office of the State Controller. The items now before the trustee for adoptions are, one, approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation's 2023 internal audit plan. Second, approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation's 2023 environmental health and safety compliance order plan. I now ask for a motion to adopt these two items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Tracy. Um, any other questions of Dennis? Otherwise, all in favor of the motion to adopt the two items? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks very much, Dennis. A good meeting this morning and appreciate the report out. Uh, last week we had two meetings, governance and finance. A number of items brought before us this morning from those two meetings. B, if you can start us off with the report out on governance, please.
Thank you, Chair. The Governance Committee met on March 16th. Um, we adopted minutes, we received three staff reports and adopted the following consent items which are now before the board for adoption. The 10 items before the board for adoption are, one, approval and adoption of annual reported procurement contracts, guidelines for procurement contracts and the annual review of open procurement service contracts. Number two, approval and adoption of annual review and approval of guidelines for the disposal of personal property and expenditure authorization procedures for New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation. Number three, approval and adoption of annual review and approval of guidelines and procedures for the disposal of real property, acquisition of real property, annual reports for the disposal and acquisition of real property and expenditure authorization procedures. Four, approval and adoption of annual review and approval of certain policies for New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation. Five, approval and adoption of the 2022 New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation Board Evaluation pursuant to sections 2800 and 2834 of the Public Authorities Law and guidance of the Authority's Budget Office. Six, approval and adoption of annual review and approval of guidelines for the investment of funds and the 2022 annual report on investment of authority funds. Item number seven, approval and adoption of New York Power Authority's 2022, 23 mission statement and strategic plan. Number eight, approval and adoption of committee appointments. Number nine, approval and adoption of New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation bylaws as amended by the committee. And number 10, approval and adoption of the Governance Committee Charter. Um, I now ask for a motion to adopt these aforementioned items.
So moved.
Moved. First, I mean made by Michael, seconded by Dennis. Thank you very much. Be a robust body of work. Well done, well navigated there. Unless there's any other questions, all in favor of the motion to approve those 10 items? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Again, thanks so much, B, for your leadership as well as the report. Um, our last committee meeting report is finance and risk where once again we continue to lean into and support a wide variety of endeavor endeavors. Finance and Risk Committee Chair Tracy McKibben. Please, uh, report out for us.
Thank you, Chairman Colmell. Um, yes, we had a very busy meeting, just as the Governance Committee did, and we have a number of items. Before the full board, we met on March 16th where we adopted the minutes and received two important staff reports. And then, as I said, very busy committee meeting where we adopted nine items that I will now present to the full Board of Trustees for adoption. The committee recommends that the trustees authorize the release of up to 25 million in funding to the Canal Corporation to support the operations of the Canal Corporation in the calendar year 2023, consistent with prior years. That the trustees authorized the release of up to 37 million within the operating fund to the Western New York Economic Development Fund. That the trustees authorized for the Reimagine Canals, Rockport Observatory and Bridge Project, a $9.5 million increase in capital expenditure, bringing the total project cost to 23.4 million, but within the prior allocated approvals from the board. A three-year construction services contract to Crane Hogan Structural Systems, Inc. of Spencerport, New York, and the approximate amount of 12.5 million for construction services to implement this project. But the trustees approved the proposed resolution, which will amend the banking resolution adopted by the trustees on February 26, 2015. This was an administrative update, update to that policy, that the trustees approved the policy for the hedging program to manage cash flow risk of non-energy commodity-linked customer contracts. Again, an update to that policy. That the trustees authorized the transfer of 15 million from the operating fund to the state's general fund for the state energy programs as we have done in prior years. That the trustee, that the NIPA trustees and the Canal Corporation Board of Directors approved the Finance Committee Charter where we've updated that charter. That the NIPA trustees and the Canal Corporation Board of Directors approved the Risk and Resiliency Committee Charter as amended by the committee. Again, updating our governing structures from for, for the, these two committees. That the trustees approve a waiver to the requirement for domestic steel, which will be obtained via a competitively bid contract to Promotec of Quebec, Canada, for fabrication and delivery of steel for the Fitzpatrick Edick Line. A lot of items there, but I now put them forward to the full board for, to adopt these items.
I have a motion to adopt all that Tracy just recapped for us.
So moved.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, Michael and Dennis. I'll let Karen decide who gets first and second dibs on that. Uh, unless there's any other questions for Tracy, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks very much, Tracy. Great job, as always, with a very full plate. All right, our last set of approvals falls in the consent agenda. I want to ensure, I don't know, Justin, obviously the Micron project is in there. Some other key initiatives, anything you or the team on a comment on there before we, you know, call for motions, some major investments that we've enabled, we've supported, that will be highly impactful for the state in the years ahead.
No, thank, thank you, Chairman. Yes, well, super excited about the authorization of of power to Micron. As we all know, it's a, it's a transformational project for central New York. NIPA is proud to be playing a role in that, along with Empire State Development and the whole state team. And so we bring that to you in the consent agenda here. I know we've, we've been, we've discussed this with you. Obviously, it's been some publicity around, around this award as well, but we're, we're really excited about the role that NIPA played here to enable Micron to locate its headquarters in Clay, New York.
Anything else in our consent agenda, any other awards? I know there's other significant awards here, so. Unless there's any other questions for Justin or the team, I'd ask for a motion to approve the matters that have been brought for us, forward to us in the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, B. Motion, Dennis, second. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, good work, team. We've navigated through the required motions and approvals for the day. So with that, uh, let's pivot back to our discussion agenda. And not to slight that which we've otherwise discussed so far. But Justin, as we kick off the bigger picture view strategically and otherwise, before we pivot to operations, finance, set the table for us and introduce other members of your team that will present to us today.
Great. Well, thank you, Chairman. Afternoon now, trustees, NIPA colleagues, members of the public. We're coming to the end of the third quarter already, believe it or not, and and three years into our Vision 2030 strategy. And as, as we know, that's the driver of all we do here at NIPA and Canals. And I think you'll, you'll hear from us increasingly as we, as we come to you with presentations and matters that that's a common thread throughout the work that we do and how we report to you. So you'll hear today from the Reimagine team. Rebecca Hughes and Angela Chandler, and also we'll hear from Eve Noel, our head of strategy, and also on the diversity, equity and inclusion front, we'll hear from Nancy Harvey. But those are all, as you know, key pillars of, of our strategy. And so as, as we, as we speak to you about it, we, we hope that you'll, you'll see that connectivity between what we do and, and, and the strategy. Before turning it over to the presenters, I want to just highlight a couple of things. One, just recently, we received from the Federal Aviation Administration an out of line of sight approval for operating drones at BG outside of the line of sight. As you know, this is, this is not something that everybody gets. It's very difficult to receive these, these approvals. And so this will enable us to inspect in a much more efficient way our transmission lines. And it's, it's a credit to the team and, and the skill and the experience of the NIPA crews that we can get that sort of approval from the federal government. I'd also like, just, just like to note that Nancy Harvey, who you'll hear from later, our head of Office of Civil Rights and Inclusion, just received an important award from the Tri-State Diversity Council, Person of the Year by what was given to Nancy just recently. And so we're very proud of her and all of her work.
All right, Nancy. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Nancy.
It's, it's quite an honor and we're so proud of the work that, that she and her team do here. And I think it's illustrative of the commitment that the board and the support that the board has given NIPA management and the work of NIPA staff and Nancy in particular, of course, that she was able to receive that award. So with that, let me, let me turn it over to Rebecca Hughes, represents the Canal Corporation and Angela Chandler from Canals and Reimagine and, and, and let them talk to you a little bit about an important project and in the context of the overall reimagine effort. And, and how we're trying to make sure that anything we do in the, on the reimagine front is consistent with the, with the initial rationale and theme of reimagine, which is really to spur economic activity and develop connections between the canal, local communities along the canal system and even other recreational assets such as the Empire State Trail that, that are located in many communities right near, right near the canal system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca and Angela.
Thank you very much, Justin. My name's Rebecca Hughes. I'm the Deputy Director for the Canal Corporation. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, colleagues and members of the public for your time this afternoon. I'm honored to be able to share an update on our Reimagine the Canals initiative and also a glimpse into my vision for what I call canal revitalization as we're thinking about this third century of operation. I'll also note that Canal Director Brian Stratton is traveling and regrets that he couldn't be here with us today, but he did send his regards and he's expressed his support for everything that's in the presentation this afternoon. Next slide, please. Thank you. So reimagine the canals is a $300 million initiative that was first introduced in 2020 as part of our effort to reimagine what the future of the New York State canal system might look like. I'll speak today about some of the refinements that we've made to the program, but I just wanted to note upfront that the primary drivers for reimagine, economic development and climate resilience remain at the heart of the program. But we've shifted our investment criteria to ensure that each new project that we introduce first in, addresses an infrastructure need on the canal system proper and then delivers on those ancillary drivers that advance local economies and ensure future resilience. And just a little background before we dive into the conversation, a reminder that the canal system is 524 miles long, spans most of upstate New York. It's comprised of over 2,700 distinct civil assets, including 57 locks along the system. So we're talking about a very massive historic infrastructure that's comprised of a set of assets that are largely built over 100 years ago. Next slide, please. Since the program was introduced in 2020, I think one of the major drivers for how we've considered our strategy has been engagement with communities. In this picture, you can see Justin with Brian Stratton engaging with Mayor Taylor of Newport, New York, as he describes his vision for how the canal is going to transform downtown, how they're going to integrate plans for canal side development with their other plans for housing development to support the really strong job market that's already present in that community. When we first introduced reimagine the canal, stakeholders and communities certainly express concern around potential changes to canal operation, thinking about things like hours of operation and the length of the season, you know, for navigation. And we've since spent a lot of time over the past two years engaging with hundreds and hundreds of stakeholders to really deeply understand their perspectives, their priorities, their hopes and dreams for the canal system. And that's informed our strategy going forward. Our, our investments in what we call reimagine 2.0, our revamped reimagine initiative, seek to build on the plans that communities already have in place for themselves. So thinking about things like comprehensive planning efforts, efforts around local waterfront development, downtown revitalization, just as we're seeing in Newark. These are all drivers for us that are really good indicators of where investments in canal side amenities are warranted. We want to make sure that we're building on the investments that are coming from the state, the communities themselves, and also from private investment so that we can really achieve a multiplier effect when we invest in a capital project. And this approach of getting closer to communities is already very much paying dividends for us. It really helps us to build a foundation of trust because we know that the challenges that are inherent in operating a historic waterway have not gone away. We're still going to be faced with difficult decisions about how the system is operated. And by having a foundation of trust and transparent dialogue with these communities and demonstrating that we understand their priorities, we can better communicate about any necessary changes in the future. An example of this is that during the non-navigation season in the winter months, we've been hosting pump out tours of our locks. I know a lot of you in attendance today have come out and gone into the lock chamber during the period of winter maintenance. And when we can expose our stakeholders to the depth and breadth of work that takes place during those harsh winter months, we're better able to demonstrate why the navigation season might be limited compared to how it was historically. We're doing much, much deeper rehabilitation work within the structures themselves. Next slide, please. And at the same time that reimagine the canals was introduced, we at NIPA were bringing to life our asset management and dam safety programs. So concurrent with the rollout of the reimagine program, we were also gaining a much better understanding of the true needs of the civil assets along the canal system. So while these things are in many ways separate, reimagine being, you know, our impact investments and canal operations and capital programming, really building that structural integrity of the system. We recognize that our strategy has to align with both of those things that we've got to deliver on a multiple bottom line. So I would say the main shift in our investments and reimagine is that they're now predicated on first and foremost delivering on structural integrity, operational efficiency, reduced liability, and still delivering on all of those values related to economic impact and climate resilience that are at the heart of the initiative from the start. Next slide, please. Going forward, our vision is a canal system that celebrates its past and is revitalized for the future generations to come. I joined the Canal Corporation almost two years ago now, and in my first 90 days on the job, I spoke with literally hundreds of stakeholders ranging from internal to external who interfaced with the canal in many, many different ways. And I kept asking each person, you know, what's the thing that unites canal operations and reimagine as an initiative? And people struggled with that. And this concept of canal revitalization, I think, is that North Star, that's the driver for all of our investments in the canal. So to achieve this vision, on the infrastructure side, we need to ensure that all 2,700 of those civil assets are in good working order so that we can provide a safe environment for our workforce and continue to offer a safe place for the public to visit and enjoy and being good stewards of that infrastructure over the next 15 to 20 years. Concurrently, reimagine investments must grow local economies, attract businesses, expand access to housing, increase recreational tourism. And when we do this in partnership with communities, our investments will be met and well exceeded by private investment. So if we do this right, the canal system will have kind of a new era as an economic driver for upstate New York economies. Next slide, please. So our overarching goal is to advance projects that not only improve the condition of the canal system while achieving growth and prosperity and inclusion, but investments that leave a real lasting legacy. So when we prioritize our investments based on these principles, we can achieve positive economic impact that well exceeds NIPA's investments. Next slide, please. Uh, these plans are aligned with Vision 2030. The tactics that we have spelled out in Vision 2030 are really the metrics by which we measure our progress. So this slide is really designed to give an illustration of that subtle but meaningful shift between reimagine as it was originally conceptualized and how we are advancing the, the program today. So when we talk about, um, you know, demonstrating the recreational and economic value of the canal system, we are also prioritizing our project investments based on how much they contribute to the resilience of the canal system overall. Strategic stakeholder management has always been a priority. I would say that the shift there is that we're really focused on transparent dialogue so that we can build coalitions of support, knowing that this historic system has its challenges, but then that when we work together, we can all be part of shared solutions by leaning in together. We're also working on long-range capital planning. I think we'll likely come back to the board with some updates on that in coming months. We're aggressively seeking outside funding for support. We know that we can't do this on our own and we've got several federal funding applications out for review currently. And then lastly, on tactic D, you know, looking to drive more efficiency within how the canal system is operated. And today, that really means right sizing our infrastructure improvement. So we know that when we initiate a capital rehabilitation project on the canal system, that it doesn't necessarily have to be like for like. So an example of this is terminal walls. These are the concrete walls that, you know, that retain the canal through many communities. Historically, those were used for commercial shipping vessels that were mooring and waiting to go through the lock during times when it was really busy and congestion, congested with traffic. As we look about, look at today's usage, which still includes commercial shipping, but is really dominated by recreational vessels. We know that we can right size a rehabilitation of a failing terminal wall by considering options like a layback wall, which removes some of the concrete structure in favor of a more natural slope. So these are just some examples of how our tactics are aligned with this overall vision that includes interdependence between reimagine and traditional canal operations. And I think that, you know, using a few projects that we're considering as a means to illustrate this is a really great way to bring it home. So with that, I'm going to introduce my colleague Angela Chandler, who serves as the Vice President for Planning for reimagine the canals. And she'll share a few project vignettes with you to illustrate some of what I described in today's presentation. And she'll share a few project vignettes with you to illustrate some of what I described in today's presentation. Angela.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. The more than one half mile long Sylvan Beach and Breakwater is located at the east end of Oneida Lake in Sylvan Beach, where the Erie Canal discharges into Oneida Lake. Due to safety concerns and its deteriorating condition, the pier has been closed to the public since nineteen sixty-six. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, the Oneida Nation opened a thirty-five million dollar resort called The Cove at Sylvan Beach. There are seventy cottages there that rent for up to thirty-eight hundred dollars per week and come with a pontoon boat and a dedicated slip. While the project had an economic success, the increased boating traffic on Oneida Lake has exacerbated issues of erosion and has increased the number of less experienced boaters navigating around deteriorated pier and breakwater. Please note that this is still a preliminary discussion and is early in our discovery. But if a reimagine investment were to be made to rehabilitate the breakwater and pier, the improvements would greatly reduce sedimentation and the need for dredging and would make the area safer for boaters, reducing NIPA's liability. Infrastructure improvements would also improve the likelihood of expanded development in the area, increasing revenues from tourism. Under reimagine two point O, each investment is grounded in infrastructure improvement and then evaluated on its ability to impact the local economy, improve climate resilience, and attract private investment. Next slide, please. In picturesque Medina, New York, the high wall carrying the Empire State Trail along the canal and through downtown is crumbling. This falling concrete has led to dangerous cycling conditions and has led us to curtail our on the canals programming in this part of Medina. In addition to making infrastructure improvements to improve the trail surface on top of the high wall, reimagine funds are being used to drive sustainable innovation. In partnership with leading art institutions, universities, philanthropy, and local investors, a project here will also include the creation of an art loop that will draw cultural tourism from nearby Rochester and Buffalo and create a neighborhood park that can be used by locals throughout the year. Next slide, please. So in coming back to the project that is on today's consent agenda, the Brockport Pedestrian Bridge, which is one of the original five projects identified in the January two thousand and twenty release of the Reimagine the Canals Task Force Report. The project was designed prior to developing the concept of reimagine two point O. So it does not include the foundational strategy of addressing an underlying infrastructure need. However, through partnerships, we have successfully attracted a two million dollar grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Junior Foundation, which seeks to fund projects that improve community health outcomes in Western New York. And the Village of Brockport has also secured one point two million dollars in a Federal Highway Administration Transportation Alternatives Program grant to improve pedestrian and cycling access on the nearby Smith Street Bridge, an award made possible due to reimagine's investment. Ultimately, the project will improve access to Brockport's Downtown Business District and will be part of their broader path to economic revitalization that prioritizes outdoor recreation on the canal and trail. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you, Rebecca, Angela. Just before I share some perspectives, others questions for Rebecca and Angela from anyone?
I guess for me, just a broad, sorry. No, no, just a broad question. I think I heard you say that the funding that we're doing through our reimagine canal structure allowed the local government to do or the local university to do some additional work. Is this sort of the model that we're trying to utilize as we build? You know, I know there were five top ones. There may be others that we add or we may take out. But we're generally, this is the model and how you are approaching the various different initiatives and projects that you will pursue about making sure that it's connected to what the local community wants to do, that they're invested both financially as well as other ways in whatever we do so that there are benefits or dividends to the, to the local community and others and in bringing in that private sector participation, right? This is sort of a model for how you want to pursue this of reimagine canal two point O going forward. Is that right?
Absolutely a model, yes. So beyond starting with an infrastructure need, we then look to a local community's DRI plan or LWRP plan for what they see is needed in their community. Then we look at that and look at how we can partner with them to attract private funds, other state or federal or local funding too. So yeah, it starts with the community after our infrastructure needs.
And I'll, I can't resist the opportunity to editorialize on that a bit, Angela. And clearly, when we first conceived this five, six years or more ago, we wanted to lean in in a meaningful way, but by no means do we want to suggest as significant as three hundred million is that that's sufficient to reinvent and transform the canals and adjacent communities. And while our intentions were a bit misconstrued or misperceived, we definitely want to leverage that three hundred million many times over. While, as I said, it's a lot of money on an absolute basis, it's not remotely enough to achieve the grander objectives that to which we aspire and we want to see evolve over the next five to ten years. So in these early on projects, we're able to step in and lean in in a more meaningful way at the same time attracting Wilson Foundation and public money and others. But we clearly want to see other sectors and other funding sources progressively step up as they're confident in our collective ability to execute. And with the leadership that Rebecca, Angela, and Brian and the team bring, Joe Kessler operationally on the investment we're making there, we're incredibly excited about what the canal system, the canal parks, whatever it evolves to be, and we come with the next five, ten years, but it's going to take much more than what we're bringing to the table. And we want to see that amplified, magnified in a way that achieves the aspirational success that was the root cause, you know, source of our initiative five, six years ago. So a great project to kick us off. And good work for navigating some choppy waters in the early going on and off the canal. And kudos for getting us all headed on a very positive constructive pass path with the multiple constituents. And we're excited to see more opportunities come our way. So well done, both of you and the team at large.
Thank you.
Anything else for Rebecca or Angela? All right. Thanks very much. And we'll make sure Brian knows you guys knocked it out of the park. So thank you much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Justin, next up, I think you have Eves given us a Vision two thousand and thirty update. Is that correct?
Correct, yep. He will, he will build on this discussion, highlighting where we are today and and how we're advancing toward two thousand and thirty. And, and again, drawing the connection between sort of, you know, day to day work, if you will, and projects that we're doing and the, and the longer term vision.
Good afternoon, everyone.
The screen is yours.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As Justin mentioned, I'm Ed Noel, Chief Strategy Officer, and delighted to update you on Vision two thousand and thirty. This is a part of the new series of updates for the board that we're going to focus on a specific strategic priority. As an early update in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll focus on what success looks like at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. I'll begin with a context of of our, our fourth strategic priority. And then, then move on to three key areas with recent examples that serve to illustrate the pipeline of projects for this year. The three areas we partner with our customers include energy efficiency projects, solar and storage projects, electric vehicle charger infrastructure projects. So let's begin with our true north, which is Vision two thousand and thirty. We framed our strategic priorities around the challenges we see in the industry. Specifically, our customers are facing evolving challenges around technology and regulation, aging infrastructure, equity, and affordability. And in the past two years, these challenges have accelerated. And they demonstrate why we need to lean in to help New Yorkers. Next slide, please. Energy efficiency projects can reduce energy use, consumption, and improve the quality of lives for our customers. In two thousand and twenty-three, we're working hard to deliver over ninety energy efficiency projects that will, that will reduce nineteen thousand metric tons of GHG emissions. That's equivalent to four thousand gas powered vehicles taken off the road. I draw your attention to the map. As you can see by the blue circles, NIPA offers projects across the state. Upstate, in cities, towns, and villages, there are a ray of LED street lighting projects. For example, all the way in the northeast corner, Plattsburgh, we deployed thirteen hundred streetlights removing seventy metric tons of GHG. Downstate, we serve customers like the New York City Health and Hospital, typically larger energy efficiency projects like boilers and chiller work. Let's drill to another level deeper and look at a specific group of customers. Next slide, please.
So Eve, before you go on to talking about the customer, just staying on this slide for just a second, I want to make sure I see the number, right? Ninety plus planned project. Can you give me a sense of, is this an acceleration of what we've been doing? We've been talking about energy efficiency projects. And I know there's a question about the cost for our customers to be that, do that. And we, we launched an initiative to try to help our customers with doing that. Is this, are we making additional progress and are we being aggressive? Is this an ambitious goal for two thousand and twenty-three? I don't have the comparison of what we did in two thousand and twenty-two or twenty-one or, well, let's say pre-pandemic. So can you give me a sense of that in terms of looking at this for the two thousand and twenty-three? Are we being ambitious enough?
Sure. We are being ambitious, more ambitious than the numbers would, would, would indicate. Specifically around, so the, the way that, this is a cyclic work. And energy efficiency projects, we have to meet our customers at where they are in the decarbonization journey. And the, what you don't see in the nineteen thousand tons of CO2 are the forty some odd plus assessment projects that we're doing to help expose options to our customers around energy efficiency and, and options to improve their energy work. So while the, the CO2 reductions are consistent with last year, they, we're actually increasing sort of information with our customers around what are the specific energy efficiency options they have. Ashtray Level One audits, roadmapping work, feasibility work are all examples of the types of projects that we're working with our customers and letting them know about their options. And we'll get into a little bit of that in the next slide with our, our customers. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Well, and Eve, just clarify, back that up for me if you would. So the nineteen thousand tons, is that predicated on completion of all of those ninety projects? Is that predicated on half of those projects?
Yeah, the nineteen thousand tons are completion of those ninety projects in two thousand and twenty-three.
So if we complete all ninety, will that nineteen thousand tons reduction? So are all ninety underway? As we sit here, what percentage of those have been started at the end of the first quarter?
I, I can get back to you with the details on which ones have started, but I think a significant, I, but, but I'll get back to you with the, the numbers. I won't speculate as to how many have started and or how many are in process. But I know
Maybe better said, ninety, ninety days in, you feel good about our ability to complete those ninety projects and achieve that goal, or you already see some obstacles, or can we exceed that? Give us a little update.
Sure. From, from the standpoint of whether we'll meet these, these goals, I, I feel full confidence that we'll meet this goal. I met with the team three days ago and we, we walked through the pipeline of projects and they felt confident that they would, that they would be able to meet these goals. So I, I do believe that like from, from barring, I, I do believe that we're moving at an aggressive pace to meet these goals.
Joe's giving me an affirmative nod here.
Yeah, I think the way to think about this is, you know, there's different, each project's in a different part of its lifecycle. So there'll be projects that we've already started that are going to be wrapping up in twenty-three. There's projects that are in design in twenty-three. There's projects that are in construction in twenty-three, and then it'll be commissioned at twenty-three. That's a rolling set of projects that keeps going. So as he pointed out, the pipeline is full. We got a lot of opportunity going forward and we're going to be able to use a lot of discretion. And, and when you look at the, the amount of tons, that's going to be a more important measure going forward because the, the customer, it's energy efficiency, but it's not just efficiency that we gain. This is also electrifying and resilience projects to help us achieve that goal. So there's going to be a, a little more discretion on the kinds of things that we think we can leverage our gunpowder to support our customers in those areas to make sure that, that, that's going to be achieved. And then we're going to slam dunk even further.
Are we, so the pipeline is full. Is that because we're aggressively selling because customers are aggressively wanting to buy or a little bit of both?
It's mutual. It's a little bit of both. We're, we're obviously making ourselves known that, you know, we have this ability to support our customers more regularly and we're in touch with them all the time. But they also have their own goals, whether they're new ESG goals or trying to green their products, and they're coming to us for solutions on that as well.
All right. Thanks. Thank you both. Sorry, Eve, go right ahead.
Yeah, no, no, please jump in with questions. Yeah. So this, this slide is simply around a deep dive on the customers within our energies efficiency program, specifically the state owned and managed buildings. Like they have a, a target of eleven TBTUs by two thousand and twenty-five. We've already completed about eight and they're gonna, they're already completed seven and they're gonna complete eight by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. Now, our work with these, we, we know that our work with six state entities manage ninety percent of the state owned buildings. Let's look at SUNY, for instance, like SUNY's goal is about four point four TBTUs. That's forty percent of the Build Smart program. And then within SUNY, you've got the University of Buffalo, which is the second largest contributor to that with eleven percent of the SUNY goal. Now, at the University of Buffalo, we've implemented several energy efficiency projects such as HVAC and lighting. And we've already caused energy reductions about twenty-six thousand MMBTUs. In two thousand and twenty-three, SUNY's work includes energy roadmapping, renewable feasibility studies, and a research lab chiller replacement. This is, this is, this is really to demonstrate the broad spectrum of projects that we're working with within one particular customer. And then we, and if you think about it, we have six of these customers that have similar, that we're having similar relationship and similar portfolio of projects that we're working with. Next slide.
Customers are, our customers are mutually motivated here. I mean, we have no problem getting them to buy into the pace and focus that we want to bring to this and make the progress.
Yeah, I think from like, the way that Joe explained it is right, right? Right? Like you think about the different projects or the different relationships or projects with project owners. It's, it's a long sales cycle where you're sort of educating and providing information with them early on so that they have become accustomed to the options that are available. There's a feasibility work. And, and so you, you sort, and so we as NIPA are really guiding them through the whole lifecycle of, of projects. So when you ask, are, are they all mutually like in the same way looking at sustainability? They all have the similar targets? And we're, we're sort of educating and helping and guiding them along the way.
Yeah, I think in aggregate, they all have the same motivation, but each customer has its own level of competency and or resource to get those goals achieved. So we're able to, you know, help them in that area. Whether it's a, you know, our, our own internal competency to help them. I mean, some of these organizations are relatively small. I'm pointing out the six biggest ones. They got a lot of internal resources. We're just helping them with financing and or technical support ideation. But they're smaller customers and municipalities and such that, that don't have those kinds of resources. Uh, but they're smaller customers and municipalities and such that that don't have those kinds of resources and we serve as that subject matter expert.
Okay.
Now, another area that our customers are looking for our help in is is really solar and storage. Um, as you know, solar and storage offers considerable benefits and resiliency, environmental sustainability and increased budget certainty. NiPA is hard at work delivering projects like the SUNY Al- Albany um, rooftops solar PV project that you see on your screen. There's over now four thousand seven hundred panels that were constructed on the rooftop of their life science buildings, building. This installation was the largest rooftop solar PV project in SUNY system and a major milestone in the University of Albany um, Energy Master Plan. This project reduced two hundred and seventy-five tons of GHG annually. And building off that accomplishment in twenty twenty-three, NiPA will be um, facilitating the installation up to five megawatts of carport canopies at Purchase College. Switching gears a bit, let's look at the example of how NiPA is helping our customers beyond the typical project delivery. The city of Albany was interested in renewable energy but lacked freely available space for cost-effective deployment. So NiPA, we introduced a creative solution. We matched the city, the city with a developer seeking a large anchor subscriber for two of its community distributed generation projects. This is saving the city over one hundred thousand dollars per year. The two systems total about fourteen megawatts and with over twenty-six thousand modules. And you see, you see by the 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 picture on the, on the, uh, before you, like, they've, work has already started there. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Another area in which NiPA is leaning in with customers is our EV charging space. Um, uh, on the map, you see that we have both operational chargers in blue and yellow chargers for, and yellow icons for um, projects in development. I hi- I highlight the Hancock site because it's the second largest location in JFK and it is, and it illustrates that without NiPA, the route between Route seventeen and the eighty-six highway corridor would have very little um, direct charge, direct current batch chargers. We basically make the route for possible for non-Tesla EV drivers. With customer-sided EV charging infrastructure, fleet owners have an outsized impact on emissions. For example, the Niagara Frontier Transportation Authority, um, work is ongoing in twenty twenty-three. The team is doing final steps on the first phase of construction project and it will continue uh, work in twenty twenty-three on the second phase of charger install. This is an eight million dollar upgrade to the Buffalo Bus Facility, resulting in the first overhead pantograph in the state. That's that charging infrastructure at the top that you see there uh, uh, for the bus. First of the time, first of a kind in the state. Now, NiPA, we we helped the the NFTA in a variety of ways, including finding funding, collaborating on infrastructure concepts, design, construction, testing. We also even helped them with upgrading the station. So now, um, the capacity to charge fifty buses at once and it'll be expanded in phase two to account, um, to to be able to charge at least uh, charge a hundred buses every night. Now, as a result, two hundred and sixty-six metric tons of GHG is being, are being reduced annually. We will pursue other fleet owners, including transit and school bus operators in twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. In conclusion, I started by saying that we, I was going to answer the question of what the success looked like for NiPA in twenty twenty-three. And in, in tw- and success looks like partnering with our customers. And it's partnering with our customers to deliver over ninety energy efficiency projects, helping state entities meet their energy goals. So the, having seven hundred, having seventy-six megawatts of solar implemented, delivering charging infrastructure throughout the state to address underserved routes and delivering charging projects with an eye on the most impactful areas in our twenty twenty-three. That's the definition of success for us here at NiPA. Specifically within our strategic prior priority around partnering with a customer and the state. Next slide. Thank you. I'll take questions. There any?
So, so what is it that you worry about, Eves, in terms of achieving that success this year? I realize uh, for most of us, when you're reporting on at the end of the first quarter, uh, we typically, uh, our glass is more than, you know, half full, uh, because it's still too early in the year to throw the towel in or suggest there's any major issues, but uh, are there, are there concerns that you have? Are there things that we could or should be doing to better ensure our success?
So there are concerns, oh, oh. There are concerns. I think NiPA and our customers are not immune to the economic conditions that are occurring right now. Um, as a result, that's why you see it, NiPA looking for like new innovative models for deploying and delivering these very needed projects. So there is a concern about really like, um, there, there is some concern about getting it done, but we're looking for new and creative ways in order to get it done.
What, new and creative? I mean, help us understand what that means.
So an example of that is the solar. The, an example of that is the solar matching, right? Where we had a customer, they didn't have the space. Um, and we went out and really found a developer who had the panels and the space, but didn't have a customer and actually bringing them together versus that, versus our di- our typical project delivery model where we deploy, um, where we actually go with them, help pick them out the can, the the panels and actually put the, the, put it in the garb, put it in the ground. And this, in this innovation was actually matching versus actually, uh, um, doing.
Okay.
That chairman, maybe I, maybe I just add here that, you know, while it's early in this, you know, we do have this recent infusion of federal support coming into the energy sector that, you know, can change some of the some of the project structures and so forth, uh, to deal with any kind of pressure we're seeing on, uh, you know, on inflation or supply chain or just the underlying economics. So we're, we're, we're optimistic about the impact that that uh, federal support will have on our projects.
Okay. Dennis B., Michael, anything else from you for Eve?
No, I think I just, um, Eve, I'm curious to see your chart that shows your progression, right, towards ultimate goal. Um, I'm sure you have one somewhere. Someone share it with me at some point.
Sure, uh, I will do more pie charts similar to the one where we have around the TTB to use, around the TBTS um, where we're, you know, the ultimate by twenty twenty-five, we're getting a twenty to eleven TB to use. We've gotten seven already and we'll get to eight by twenty twenty-three. So I'll, I'll do more of those for going forward.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eve.
All right.
Uh, Nancy, uh, DEI, we continue to prioritize and lean into uh, the responsibilities and opportunities uh, we have to better level the playing field. Uh, talk to us as to how we're doing and what more we can be doing.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm having a hard time hearing Nancy.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
A little better.
Were you, go ahead, try again, Nancy.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Well, go ahead. My mic's all the way up. Working this morning. Um, let me give it a shot.
Okay.
All right, uh, afternoon, Trisby's EMC colleagues and um, members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you and update on our employee resource groups at NiPA and Canal. As the chairman said, I'm Nancy Harvey, the Chief Diversity Equity Union Officer. So as you know, DENI is creating an inclusive culture as part of Vision 2030, the foundational pillar. Um, we're building inclusion as part of our competencies as they relate to the annual performance review process. And um, we're encouraging and holding our individual contributors and our managers accountable for this DEI competency. As part of that, we're enabling managers to support and participate with our employer resource groups. So in two thousand seventeen, you know, that's when we revamped and launched our employer resource groups officially. And they are an integral part of our DEI strategy. And we continue to hear from participants that they find a home at NiPA and Canal who are employer resource groups where they can find a voice and where they feel appreciated. And that's important because of employee, because or employer resource groups are open to all. They're open to everyone and they're comprised of employees who are champions for change toward an inclusive and toward a diverse work environment. Our ERGs address the needs of underrepresented groups while at the same time leaving room to explore issues of intersectionality and providing the majority group a way to participate. So over the last year, we worked with the six employer resource groups and their executive sponsors to revisit the current ERG pillars, which consist of um, talent development and mentoring, recruitment and retention, business focused outreach and development, and then there's a community focused outreach and technology. We reviewed the employer resource groups' goals and objectives to ensure that um, our ERGs are elevating our employees by providing leadership development opportunities as well as driving greater awareness and action regarding allyship in the workplace. So through ERG Elevate, we revisited our ERGs to ensure that we were responding to the needs of our employees while providing the resources for the ERGs to drive greater impact. And this is by aligning with our strategic priorities. We created a six-month training program and uh, it's centered on leadership and professional development needs for our ERG leaders and for their members. And in January, we hosted the ERG co-chairs, their managers and EMC members to educate them on the goals, benefits and the challenges of our employer resource groups. We're empowering managers to support ERG members who may be on their teams. Um, and we're inviting managers also to engage in the ERG process as champions and as allies. Next slide.
Am I the only having a tough time with Nancy's audio?
I have a little hard time too.
Nancy, it is a little hard to hear you. Are you dialed in by phone or by computer?
By computer, because we fixed it this morning.
Okay, um.
If we can, if we can fix it and pick it up a little bit later.
Sure.
It's just, it's
No, and I want
Yep, okay. Uh, Chris, why don't we switch to the next presentation? Nancy, if you want to take yourself off video and audio, we'll have IT call you.
Oh, it's me. And we, we can circle back. I don't want to lose the it's obviously an important dialogue and it's just hard to hear, let alone follow Nancy apologize. So why don't we try to fix that and we'll uh, come back to it before we adjourn. Um, all right, uh, in terms of operations and finance, uh, Joe, I think, uh, you're up next, uh, so so I can hear you loud and clear since you're sitting next to me. Hopefully others uh, can do that as well. The screen, the screen is yours.
If I sound garbled to you, it's a problem. So hopefully everybody can hear me. Uh, you can go right to the next slide, Carly, please. Um, thank you, Chairman, the board, um, staff and the public at large. Uh, just to give you an update on uh, where we are in utility operations and commercial operations. Uh, as you know, uh, those two groups have merged now for going on two years. And uh, I would say that it's been a very beneficial to the organization that we made that move. The uh, what we've been doing primarily is looking for synergies in the entire supply chain between the, the fuel that we buy, the product that we produce, the energy and so forth, and then of course, the uh, how we sell that. And we've been evaluating our operating model going forward and the organizational structure on a regular basis to make sure that we are aligned to make sure all resources are in pointing north to the uh, Vision 2030 and beyond. Um, so we know we have ambitious goals, uh, we have an evolving workforce and uh, we are going to respond to whatever global impacts there are financially and uh, in the energy industry. Um, so that said, you'll see on this chart that what we're doing in operations is taking really a three-pronged approach, uh, parallel approach to ensure that we're prepared. Uh, the first is, uh, since utility commercial operations has been uh, put together as a single business unit, uh, we really started to align the resources around project delivery. And uh, we continue to do that around uh, project controls as well, uh, so that we can reinforce our commitment uh, as trusted advisors to our customers. Because on the other end of all that supply chain is our ability to support our customers in the ways that Eve described earlier. The second prong is really in the, as the energy landscape is evolving, is to take a look at the regulatory environment. Um, a- again, kind of leveraging what Eve talked about as our role changes in in the way that we uh, are able to uh, grease the skids and some of the projects for uh, CLCPA. What we're learning is our role is changing to some degree. And a, and a good example is the STAM project where not only we, will we be owning a piece of that substation to support the work going down in Genesee County, um, but we're also going to be um, taking on new compliance obligations as a transmission operator. So we're staffing up. Uh, there's a significant training element and a significant, uh, significant uh, control element that we have to have in place for that. Uh, so there are other examples like that that we're going to focus on, but that's a very good example. And finally, we also recognize at the end of all this in twenty thirty, if we were to look back, our asset base is going to be significantly different. Um, right now, I think that New York Power Theory has been comfortable for many decades, being basically a large generating a G and a, and a, you know, small T, uh, player in the energy industry. And again, not to dismiss the customer side, because I will talk about the commercial operations shortly. Uh, but I think when we, you know, we're place ourselves somehow, uh, in twenty thirty and look back, what we're going to see is we're really a large hydro organization and a har- a, a large transmission organization. And that's going to create uh, opportunities for us to upskill employees, to change our, 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 the way we're composed of uh, different skill sets, uh, you know, where uh, storage expertise may have to come into play, other control and electronics types of extra expertise may have to come in place. Of course, always concerned about cybersecurity as well. Um, and we're going to look for opportunities to continue to upskill our workforce. That's both on the bargaining unit side as we come to conclusion on some of the uh, collective bargaining agreements that we have. Uh, we're still at the table on a few of them. We did finish the IVW. We're already at the table with them talking about uh, the next steps as we start to evolve the skill sets there. Um, and we also recognize that some of these assets, kind of like a way canals became a new asset for us. Uh, different asset class, uh, that we do have common expertise in managing assets from an asset management perspective. And I think that's going to come into play as well as we, we think about um, whether it's DER or others, uh, generating facilities, but of course additional transmission facilities and uh, even something like Connectal. Uh, there's a lot of synergy in the way we manage those projects. Um, next slide, please, Carly.
So big picture, Joe, so, um, I don't know, just kind of talk to us a little bit. So back to success this year and what you and your team are focused on, how we, how you know, we should, you know, be comforted that you're on track. Uh, give us a little more of, you know, that perspective.
Yeah, on the operational side, it's a little easier uh, to align because most of our capital budget gets filtered through our EPMO group, NRS Performance Portfolio Group to make sure it's aligned with Vision 2030. So everything we're doing, uh, in fact, that's kind of the mantra we have in operations now is if it's not supporting Vision 2030, we really shouldn't be doing it. That's what our, that's what our North Star is. Uh, with that said, there are a lot of things that, um, you know, like, that we do lose sleep over. And one of the key areas that we're seeing right now is really around system planning. It's an area that is uh, in high demand, not only because of other utilities competing for that same talent. Uh, but the amount of infrastructure that's being proposed requires uh, more detailed analysis in various different scenarios. And that's, or tho- those studies are orders of magnitude higher, uh, than what they used to be. And finally, the, the entrance in that area, uh, that are interested in participating are not just utilities anymore. There's obviously a lot of developers and financial people who are creating development companies to do those things. And they're also trying to uh, gain those talent, that talent. So you know, if you think of the, 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 the time, talent and treasure, I think the talent right now is number one on my mind in terms of trying to make sure that we're, we're we got a, a, an organization that's in place to, to support all that. Much of these targets are, as you know, twenty forty, twenty thirty-five, twenty thirty. And um, that's why we want to take that perspective of putting ourselves in twenty thirty, because we know we're going to have to build this town in-house.
So we're, we're Want to run the business today for what we expect to be.
And we need to start tech and right now, uh, to get there. So, you know, for example, in labor, obviously And we need to start tech and right now to get there. So, you know, for example, in labor, obviously, it's like a four-year apprenticeship for some of these skill sets. I would argue in some of these more sophisticated technical fields, even if you graduate with an engineering degree, it's, it takes some sophistication. That's going to take three or four years of that as well. So we're working on that right now with Karina Sazlo and the team at HR and talent development to do that in-house. Also find ways to feed the pipeline.
Is that a function of feeding the pipeline or if we, if the talent were there, do we have the systems and the programs in place to. Ensure we have the right level of talent coming out the other end or.
So ironically, the actual strain on that piece of it is that some of the people that were. Developing talent are now being tasked with doing the analysis because there's such a shortage. So what we're learning from, we have some, Bruce Firenash, who's one of our, he's a professor and he's one of our subject matter experts in this area. Is telling us that even the programs that are out there for this are not what they used to be. So we believe we have the competency in-house, the balance is going to be how do we facilitate while also doing the analysis? So we're trying to build up the number of people that we have in place to do it. And there are competencies we have, you know, the clay to build somebody like that, we have that, you know, we do have a lot of electrical engineers and technical people. It's just now making that specialty a little bit more appealing for them. And providing as a recruiting and retaining tool, other things like, you know, flexibility and things like that to make sure we have.
Right, so that we're the, we're the attractive place to work.
Exactly, exactly.
And then what about the core? Operational mundane day to day.
I don't ever consider mundane, but.
I know, I know you don't.
Yes.
I'm not trivializing it.
No, and yeah, it's. It, I think, you know, as far, as far as that goes, everything, all of our current assets that we're working with right now are really good shape. We did that. We're on the other side of most of our life extension modernizations. The big product obviously is the next gen Niagara.
Right.
And we're working with Danielle Piper and Brad Vanoffen's engineering team right now to kind of focus our efforts on. On right sizing that to provide the flexibility we need because that plant and all of our plants, really our hydro plants are going to be. Operated in a significantly different way to make sure that the injection of renewables and other storage and other technologies are going to be. That can be as flexible, can be inserted into the system. So that, that investment's being looked at as well. We're confident there. We haven't met any real significant supply chain issues. So we're on track, on schedule for, for the most part on those projects.
Does that imply supply chain is improving or we're just planning for more delays?
Timing wise, it's improving. Cost wise, it's, it's just increasing costs. I mean, we're still, there's a lot of competition for labor and that's going to continue as we develop these other energy projects. It's really the same. Pool of resources that we're seeing on the bench in terms of, you know, transmission alignment, for example, or construction personnel. All those, that pool of resources is getting thin. And so the way that's made up for is the construction costs are getting a little bit more expensive to complete these projects. So we're giving a close eye on all that.
Before we jump to commercial, Michael, Dennis, B, any other questions? I don't mean to.
No, no questions. Good report.
Okay, the commercial, the commercial side.
Yeah, on the commercial side.
Focus on the customer.
We're, you know, obviously we're, we're in near the end of March and these numbers represent January. The trends here are consistent with February. I don't have the numbers in, in front of you, in front of you, I should say. I have the numbers. But.
You don't want to give us the numbers?
No, not until, not until after March. I will, I will give you the numbers. So basically, gas prices in, our, then energy prices have been depressed in the first part of the year here. It's really largely due to the weather. It's been a relatively mild winter. So we're seeing depressed prices. Right here, you see the January gross margin is, is significantly below what we projected. That got worse in February to some degree as well. So, but we are about seventy seven percent hedged. Through February and we feel those hedges have helped out quite a bit. As of January, it's been a six million dollar shortfall. That's, that's grown significantly into February to close to thirty, over thirty million dollars. But we are optimistic that we'll continue to work with a, our, our ERM team to, to recover as much as we can there. And of course, we're, we're arm in arm with Adam as we plan this going forward as our CFO. Despite the depressed energy prices, on the other hand, we have had a lot of water. We haven't had a lot of ice issues or anything like that in Lake Erie. And in Niagara River, so we are about thirty percent as of through January on the actual production of energy through water. And again, we just continue to optimize leveraging our skills in the R M to, to dispatch that water and energy. And also work on ancillary services in terms of capacity, voltage control and other things that we can be compensated for in the market as well. Next slide, please. Our customer business lines, again, very healthy. I, I, last meeting, we talked about that we had, you know, changes at the leadership on this commercial side of the business. I do want to assure the board that we are taking a hard look at that and we are going to have continued customer focus as we, we plan the next steps there. There's a lot in play and we'll be ready to report to the board in the near future on what, what those ideas are. But I want to assure you that we, we have gained our feet. We're not treading water in these areas. We are moving forward in all areas. Got a lot of competent and very talented people working on this. So right now, just basically, we're, we're generally. On target and this, again, these trends will continue through February as, as we take a look at what we got to do there as well. The only red is capital spending mobility, but those are sometimes large projects that are timely. So we believe from a timing perspective, we'll recover in those areas.
Okay.
Was there a question? I'm sorry. Was that you, B? I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about the big red guy, right?
Yeah, that's, that's more timing than anything else right now. Early in the year. Unless there's any questions on this slide, I can move on.
I think the next slide talks to Mike Brown.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit earlier. So Mike Brown, this is the Recharge New York Program averages, generally the recharge New York programs average about four hundred fifty-one jobs per megawatt. This is at a hundred and forty megawatts significantly below that seventeen jobs per megawatt, but. It is at about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars per megawatt of capital investment. And of course, it's a stimulus. So by the end of the project, the jobs are expected to grow to over nine thousand. And the capex is expected to grow over one hundred billion dollars for this project. So it is a very rewarding project and a very good keystone for what we're trying to do here. With our resources to support economic development in New York.
If I could just say that Mike Brown is working very hard in this country, New York region to fulfill its commitment. Around workforce development and inclusion and diversity. So. I've been to one session that was all about meeting with the minority. Women and veteran owned businesses and it was quite the turnout and there was a lot of positive, positive, positive energy.
Well, certainly an important initiative for us as a state. So doing it well, doing it right is critically important. So. Good to hear, B.
There's nothing else left on this. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There you go. So, yeah, so. In terms of safety, you know, I think more routinely, we're going to continue to report to the board. The data in your, in your reporting from the chief operating officer in aggregate on all things safety, but. We want to take this time with the board on an annual basis to just talk more strategically about the kinds of things we're going to be focused on each year. And this cycle happens to be this particular meeting. So I just wanted to touch base on a few things. What we're learning is that. You know, safety does have a, a direct impact on our ability to deliver vision twenty thirty from a couple of ways. One is primarily on the recruiting and retaining of talent. We want to make sure that our safety record is, is impactful. Of course, we're always targeting zero. It's often sounds like a platitude, but it really is something sincere that we're shooting for. But we work with a lot of energy and a lot of pace. And unfortunately, we have incidents that we have to. Deal with and it's, it's unfortunate. And of course, when we do have significant incidents, incidents like we have in the years past where we've had to stand down work. That, of course, can also have budget and. Schedule impacts. So we're always concerned about safety, but number one reason why we're concerned is for the employee themselves and the contractors themselves to make sure everybody goes home in one piece. What we're learning is that we really want to make a shift this year and our goal this year is to kind of focus on culture. Of safety internally, the organization. So we're starting with a new age health and safety mission statement around every employee working safely every day. We are going to have a summit of sorts in the second quarter. We're going to bring together the people who deal more directly with the direct labor that's dealing with the work where the rubber hits the road. And really just get collaborated, collaboration between not only top down, what's compliance, but what we need to do and have to be. Be hiding. Abiding by, but by the same token, the answer is in the, in the organization. We want to make sure we're hearing from the folks on ideas. To continue to work on our, our safety metrics and just being safe in general. It's really not about the metrics, it's about one individual. To that end, we're also going to be implementing some software, HF software for to increase our ability to do analytics. And increase our safety communication. I did talk a couple of meetings ago about this human performance initiative, HPI. We did start doing some of this already, having a questioning attitude and effective communications. And we are going to do continue training on that and also computer based training for everybody. So they have some idea of how to stay out of line of fire. And another thing that we really want to focus on this year because when we do, when we work with the analytics that we do have, the data that we do have. We're finding that much of what we have has to do with ergonomics, just people doing things. You know, maybe there's a tool to do it better, maybe there's a position to work better. And, you know, they're pulling muscles and that kind of thing. So we're going to have continuous focus on that, making sure they're not in awkward positions and. You know, pulling weights with the right equipment and with the right support that they need. And then finally, in terms of near miss. Communications, the near misses are a very good indicator. We know this historically, a certain amount of near misses, you can mathematically equate to a particular incident, a number of incidents you can equate to a, a serious injury and or fatality. So if you're tracking near misses and you're, and you're, you're counting on them and you're also leveraging the lessons learned from those near mystery reports into our processes. We hope to avoid the, the ultimate, you know, danger of actually hurting somebody very seriously. So we're putting in mechanisms and we're also going to leverage that same software to catalog these and use them as safety tailgates going forward. As we've learned on process before something serious happens. And I think that concludes my report. Next slide, please.
Joe, one thing. Just like I reminded Angela. Is canals included in that set of projects and programs? Okay. When you look at the page, you don't see canals.
Fair point. We'll correct that. Now, on the, on the safety metrics, they do have a different. Dart rate that we, we measure. So some of the dart rates we measure are different because of the kind of work we do. Utility, each, each dart rate has a target based on benchmarking against the industry you're in. What they do is a little bit challenging to classify. It's, you know, is it. Things that you would do, do use at loading docks because it's near water, is it marine, is it, you know, construction, what is it? So it's all that and we try to find an aggregate number that makes sense for them. So that the targets may be different, but all the initiatives are the same.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, certainly want to underscore our support for. Safety first and how critical that is. And I want to ensure you're comfortable, you're getting the support you need. From us, we're proud of our, our safety standards and the operating environment you and the team create. So. Appreciate that update. If I can before we move on, I meant to ask.
Josh, can I just ask a question to Joe?
Sure, Dennis, go ahead.
Joe, how do you monitor and control the contractors and, you know, how they're actually doing their safety proportions and measuring up what they should be doing every day?
That's actually, that's a great question. Thank you, Dennis, for that. So first of all, when we do vet contractors before we even hire them. Part of our evaluation process, as you know, we do a panel process and we vet all of our contracts and contractors. Safety is one of the metrics we use in that selection process. So if we, if there is a contractor out there with a reputation of, of being careless or, or not as safe as they could be. That, that score gets marked against them. The second part is they are always required to provide a HASP, so a health and safety plan. To our, our construction managers and our project management team to make sure that, and that's vetted by us. So our team, our technical team and the, and the health and safety side looks at that to make sure they got everything covered. In terms of that they're working at heights, they need hot work permits, whatever they might need, we make sure that HASP is inclusive of all those. Measures. And then finally, we are now requiring them to provide us data on their safety more routinely. And we have actually in, in situ and actually in progress in construction projects have had stand downs with them. And quite frankly, they're all of the same. You know, mindset around employee safety and, and actually public safety. So when we do request those meetings and those stand downs, they're, they're very accommodating to us. So our, we have a reputation, we, we encourage them and I have been in some of these meetings very recently. Where our team has been very forthright about saying, you know, that we have a very low tolerance for anything that's unsafe. And they seem to accept that. So, but we do have data that we kept collecting that now it's not comprehensive yet. We've been collecting it for a little over a year, I think. And we can certainly provide an update in a future meeting if you'd like.
Good to hear, Joe. Thank you.
Can I go back? My bad, I had a note to ask. We were talking Micron in consent agenda. I think it's replacement power, but it was released for me, a significant award to Amazon. And a big Niagara Falls project. Can you talk to that a little bit? I think it's, so what it has like five hundred million dollar, you know, project in, in the falls has gotten. At least there's been some headlines locally, media coverage, their Hamburg facility, when are they bringing it online, all that good stuff? Can you bring us current? I mean.
I, I'm not prepared to give you that update right now, but is, I don't know.
We approved it in consent agenda, so. Can we get a little more on that?
I can't see who else is on. Might be able to help there.
Justin, are you giving me the look or you're on mute?
No, I was just looking at my, I was just looking at my screen to see if Maribel or Rich Smith were on.
I mean, it's a, it's a big ticket project for, you know, the certainly Niagara Falls. So we haven't talked about it that I'm aware of.
Yeah, why don't we do this, Chairman? Why, why don't we, why don't we circle back with you and give you a separate briefing with the right people on? Because I. I don't, I don't see Maribel on here.
Maribel is out of the office. I can add Rich Smith. Perhaps we can not jump around too much, but I hear Nancy has moved to a different room. So maybe we want to go to Nancy's presentation, finish up while I get Rich on the line.
Yeah, Nancy, you're at him.
We don't, we don't need, we don't need to get rich on the line. I'm not looking to, you know, fire drill this. I'm just, we can come back to me just so I have a better handle on. Where we are with that, okay?
Yep, got it.
All right, since we have approved it, the project itself, a little bit more background and context there would be helpful. So. Okay, nothing else for Joe? All right, if you want to try to circle back, bring Nancy back in the loop.
All right, I'm, I think we're good now.
Sounds much better.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Let's see. I'm going to move to that slide. So I was talking previously about the DEI foundational pillar. And around the DEI competences that we have and the ways managers could support our employer resource groups. And so we're approaching this work, the employer resource group elevate program. In two phases, right? Phase one started last year. Our goal is to engage and excite the participants and we wanted to set expectations for the mission and the journey ahead. So we provided professional developmental modules. You see there ERG one, one oh one and ERG two oh one. And ERG one oh one covered the significance of ERGs historically and in the current context. We provided a background on NIPA and the basics of employer resource groups so that all of our ERG leaders. Have an understanding of the basic elements and how to be a five star employer resource group. In two zero one, in two oh one, we captured the elements of a successful ERG playbook. This is to discuss DEI topics of intersectionality, of power and of privilege. We've identified the essentials for success in an employer resource group that include participants' needs, participants' needs, right? That's time, whether it's executive support and the need for recognition for the work that they're doing as well. We also identified leadership engagement and better ways to do that with our ERG leaders. ERG needs the budget and they also need manager support. So we discussed that. We engaged the ERGs between sessions also just to get their feedback on how it was going. And on the areas of development that we were discussing and out of those sessions, we adjusted our training sessions and. We adjusted the content based on the needs of the participants. We've even created. We've even created additional support items for the ERG leaders and their executive sponsors, like um for instance. A feedback template to use during the annual performance review process, so executive sponsors could share with the leaders, managers directly. On their experience and their thoughts for inclusion in the performance review. In January, we gathered the employer resource group leaders, their managers and members of EMC to recognize these leaders and to celebrate the conclusion of phase one. So six ERGs gave executive presentations, and we recognized them as champions of diversity, equity and inclusion. It was a very proud moment for ERG leaders, and I'm delighted to share highlights of the day with you. We have a video clip, so you can see for yourself.
I am excited this morning to see everybody here, right?
To the extent that work like this can improve upon the culture here, I feel like. In my small way, if I can promote that, that I'm helping the organization so that it it grows from where we are. I personally am committed to this work. It's important to me. It's touched me as a leader. And I'm really excited that all of you are here today to continue this important work.
When I first got here, it was just before the pandemic, and then we were sent home. The ERGs for me were important so that I could find a community when I wasn't here with the community, and that was really where I started to create my base here at NIPA. And since we've been back in the office, it's actually helped me better do my job, because I already have all these great contacts that I met from the ERGs.
We're promoting allyship throughout the NIPA canals regions, because I love interacting with people and helping people and volunteering and making a difference in a community.
We want people to be able to learn from the experts within NIPA. There are certainly experts among us who know a lot about energy, know a lot about sustainability, and our goal is to. Create situations where people can learn from each other.
I do want to acknowledge all our partners here, the DEI Champions, EMC, our regional managers, continue to work on building equity and inclusion across NIPA and canals.
Thank you. So um I do want to share. I did want to share that we've hired program managers um as we develop our strategy for increased engagement at the site. So Alexis Swiger and Lynn Berger are two new DEI program managers. They're also liaising with our employer resource groups just to improve um the connection and the support from my office. And that presents across the sites. This Alexis is um based in Niagara and Lynn is based in Clark. Um so for twenty twenty-three, this year, we have turned our focus to phase two, and we've identified the four initiatives you see here. So first, we're establishing an ERG council. Um we introduced this concept in January. And there is an interest in having an intersectional forum for ERG leaders to share best practices. To share their challenges and to talk about opportunities. We're developing a government, a governance model that will enable the leaders across intersectional identities to better align and collaborate. And execute their annual strategic plans with each other's support. Um they all have shared goals as well for the entire ERG community in order to encourage allyship. In favor of intersectional challenges and opportunities. Uh second thing that we identified was to just continue to um focus on increasing management engagement and commitment. So we're educating managers on an ongoing basis on the goals, the benefits and the challenges of participating in an ERG. And we're also encouraging them to support the ERG members who may be on their teams. Um a third thing that we identified is to provide training and onboarding for our executive sponsors. And we're going to start with the two newest executive sponsors that we've identified. We haven't rolled them out yet, but it's EMC members that will champion pride in power allies. And as well as women in power. And so we believe, just like the ERG Elevate Program is helping um our ERG leaders to. Really step up their game and have that five-star ERG um practice in place. We also want to support our executive sponsors and help them to understand better how to lead and participate with our employer resource group leaders. Um so we'll have our inaugural annual ERG DEI award ceremony. That will recognize the accomplishments of our ERGs and of our allies across NIPA. So we're doing all of this to drive greater awareness of employer resource group opportunities. And challenges within the NIPA canals community, and we're already seeing the positive impact when we introduce new employees to ERGs. As membership engagement, as a membership engagement channel. So we're looking forward to continuing the progress, and we're creating a more inclusive culture for employer resource groups. Next slide, please. So here you have it. Um we we talked about this last week, the work for twenty twenty-three um comprehensively. So as you can see here, for twenty twenty-three, we are working across all of these areas to create a NIPA that is good for all, good for everyone. And where each of our employees feel seen, heard, and that they belong at NIPA and canals. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. We applaud your leadership and. Wonderful. Back to earlier points that is being recognized and I want to ensure you're getting the support you need from us, and you feel comfortable and confident with. What we're doing to enable the important work that you're leading.
Thank you, Chairman, and I I do, I have to say, I am um very um. Look, I'm very su- very well supported, and that just showed with the award that I just got. It's not about me, it's about um the employees here, the colleagues that I have, and the support from senior leaders and from the board. So thank you.
All right, terrific. Any other questions for Nancy? Okay, betting cleanup today, Adam. Uh usually in the middle of the lineup, you know, today you're betting cleanup, a lot of pressure here, finish strong, finish on a high. So. Take it away.
Sure, thank you, Chairman, and uh.
My trout struck out last night. I know you're going to do better than that.
Well, good, well, good afternoon. Trustees, members of NIPA staff and members of the public. Um you know, I guess this is um. Part two of this morning's conversation at the Audit Committee about. Our our financials and also a continuation discussion we had at. The Finance Committee meeting uh not too long ago on the sixteenth. And to follow up on Chairman specifically, your request to uh, you know, take, take a look at the the balance sheet and trends and things around. That and actions we've taken to strengthen our our balance sheet, improve our liquidity and position ourselves to. Meet our strategic goals and weather unforeseen uh events. Um so, you know, a number of areas we focused on was to improve our liquidity and metrics. Uh deleverage a balance sheet in in the face of having to put on uh more debt. For uh financing large capital projects, but to. Uh improve our cash position and ability uh to execute, and then find ways to to improve our our bottom line. Uh next slide, please. So so to look at where we were, the change, the major changes, tried to point out some based on actions that we've taken uh. Uh through finance and together with the approval and support of the board. Um if you look at where we were pre-pandemic. Um our cash position, you know, significantly increased almost uh more than double, uh almost, you know, almost double. From uh seven hundred and eighty-seven million, one point five uh billion. Uh that. You know, it's a function of, you know, improved cash flow from operations. And also to um bring down uh and uh the receivables. Which were represent the risk and we're able to um bring money back into into NIPA. Uh as well as there are some um funds there that are still proceeds from uh the bond issues we have done that have yet to be. Uh spent, but overall, it's uh really uh. A measure of how we've improved just overall, just the the cash position, as we mentioned before, that cash position has been committed towards. Um paying for that three-point-two-billion-dollar uh capital program over the next four years. So every dollar of that is it's committed. Uh and so how do we do all that? Well, the CES receivables, as you see from, that were up, it's about five hundred and forty-nine million in twenty nineteen. Um that's have been brought down to one hundred and seventy-nine, will continue to go down as loans have either paid off, refinanced or been sold. And uh so we made tremendous progress on that front while also offering. Creative, cost-effective alternatives for our customers in finding ways to finance their energy efficiency projects. Whether it be uh participating in our uh bond conduit program that we have established. Or um looking at other uh financing alternatives, whether it be partnering with the with with the state. And um and recently, we've been in lots of discussions with the New York State Green Bank. Which is a um subsidiary of NYSERDA, and it's was funded with a billion dollars through the PSC based on uh from ratepayer dollars, but used to finance. Uh green projects around the state. So we've been having conversations with them and see how they can support our customers. Um particular interest is that they should be getting some money from federal programs that are only available for states who have green banks where they could provide. Um subsidized loans, you know, in this kind of a rate environment, you know, in the in the two percent. Two to three percent range when we're in a six to seven percent kind of rate environment. So we're, we're encouraged about that. We're going to pursue that, so. But on that front, the New York State receivables, you recall during the uh financial crisis. The authority lent out one hundred and forty-three million dollars to the state to help them through one of their, with their tough times. This presented a significant risk for NIPA and and the view of the, our investors and the rating agencies in the sense that, well. Okay, the state said they're going to pay you back, but what if they don't? What what are you going to do? So they would uh really count that as. As a uh a high-risk receivable that uh they really put little. And little probability on being able to have it all paid off. And as you could see. Uh this past year, the state made their last payment of forty-three million dollars, so they've completely paid that off, and we've taken that risk off. Uh the next is the OPEB assets. Uh so our OPEB um. Assets that are in the OPEB trust that we manage actually exceeds the amount of our liability today. Uh so we're very well-funded there, and and from nineteen, it turned into a, from a, a net. OPEB liability of two hundred and twenty-one million. If you take the, look at the assets up top and the liability below, the two hundred and twenty-six minus the five. To um what is today a seventy-four-million-dollar net asset with that two hundred and twenty-six liability being reduced to zero. Uh that was driven from by by two major factors. If you recall, we did move the canals left um OPEB liability into the OPEB trust. Uh thus taking a significant portion of that off. The balance sheet as well as we put in the Medicare Advantage program for those retirees hitting sixty-five. That also had significant impact on reducing the OPEB liability, so made lots of, lots of progress there. Uh further down, you can see, we issued over uh one point seven billion dollars of debt, one point one of that was the restructuring we did in twenty twenty. Um you know, in in the thick of the crisis, uh insured up our 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 liquidity debt at that time and and provided certainty around our our capital plan. Um we've added this past year, you know, six hundred and fifty-nine million related to the separately financed project, so while it's one point seven billion. Uh the six fifty-nine doesn't get counted against the NIPA general bond resolution. It's. It's separately financed and uh and project finance, so it doesn't go against our our rating agency metrics or anything like that, and that was successful, and we're going to continue to look. To build upon that. As discussed earlier this morning, um based on the uh implementation of GASB eighty-seven. And how uh our contracts have been reviewed, the capital lease obligation of a billion dollars related to eighty-two. Has been removed from the balance sheet, so now it's zero, and that will be reflected as a um. As an income statement item going forward as a purchase power. Uh on on the expense side and customer revenue on the other side offsetting each other in general, you know, basically, so. That will also um go into effect. Our commercial paper that we use primarily to finance those customer loans has um significantly been reduced. Um as well, uh so we have less commercial paper outstanding. We had five hundred and forty-nine in twenty nineteen, and we're down to one seventy-nine uh today. So you know, those are some of the major changes there that, as you could see, have significantly strengthened our liquidity position, our balance sheet strength, and have us. Um you know, well, well positioned to achieve our strategic goals and our very large capital plan for over the next four years. Any questions on this?
I think we've had good dialogue between finance audit, Adam, so.
Yep. We'll move on to the next. Next. So other metrics again to look at, our days cash on hand significantly higher, one hundred and fifty-one uh versus three hundred days. Uh again, days liquidity even higher, being given all the new liquidity lines we put in place, which we will show. At in twenty nineteen, we had only eight million dollars of available credit lines. Of committed credit lines available to NIPA. Uh today, we have seven hundred and seventy-one million of committed credit facilities. Uh to NIPA, uh including that additional uh two hundred and fifty-million hybrid facility we put in place. That gives us the ability to use it for either commercial paper or as a a straight revolver. Uh we've increased our capacity to work with counterparties in our hedging program primarily, or whether it be for um, you know, non-energy. Um metals or the energy hedges we do, that's been increased from one hundred and thirty million to three hundred million. Uh with with the various counterparties that we deal with. Uh total cash investments, we said before, has increased significantly, and as you could see, the debt service coverage ratio is one measure has gone up. Also um significantly since uh twenty nineteen. So just giving you a sense of the the cumulative effect of all the things we've done. Over the last few years from pre-pandemic to where we sit today. Uh next slide, please. And this is just a recap of the difference from twenty-one to twenty-two, just more of the same, but just showing, you know, what what happened between um from this year to last year, and. I think we've covered all of this, but just for the that comparison purpose of of what happened between twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh next slide, please. And this is the impact of the uh the eighty-two, which was a significant impact in this year's audit, which we did cover in depth this morning, but just for. To be on the record in terms of major changes to the financials uh this year. Next slide. And then looking ahead, um you know, what what is our, what do we think about from the finance organization? How do we? Partner with the business units? Um you know, we're here to help enable them to achieve um their goals. And overall, achieve the the goals of the vision twenty thirty. So, you know, we've just developed a a long-term. Uh capital capacity planning model that looks out ten years and gives us the ability to. Um identify where we may have shortfalls, given changes in projected uh. Cash flow uh that we would have available for financing. So that's a running model that's continuously updated. And uh also, I think, as we had mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting. Um you know, we've gone through an ex- extensive exercise to prioritize our projects. Uh we've gone through projects and we've scored them from a financial aspect, risk, strategy. Putting that together, creating priorities so that if we have to make tough choices down the road, or because of some unforeseen events, we know where. Uh we would need to pivot first, and we have uh, you know, the ability to um to be agile when needed. Uh for the financial management, we have a significant digitization roadmap that we're going on, trying to automate more of the financial processes. Which we believe will reduce operational risks throughout the authority, as well as provide more timely financial information. And um and and provide tools for the rest of the organization to pull data, create their own financial management ability, so. Uh that is uh currently in process, a lot of things on just um re-engineering our processes, looking at more efficient ways. Uh to get uh our our data into the system and provide um information to senior management. Uh enhancing the the enterprise risk management and business controls framework. I think you heard a lot of it from Angela this morning about working with our business controls group. As well as working with the risk management group and getting those three groups uh working together, because there's an interconnection between. Controls, risk, audit, and uh making sure that, you know, they're all connected, and we have. Built into our EGRC system the ability to, you know, show changes in risk. Whether it be because uh various controls have been implemented, audit points have been resolved. Or where risk has been heightened because of a new audit coming out, which, you know, uh heightens or or uh raises issues of uh of uh items that need to. Be addressed, you know, going forward. So all of that is being integrated. So all of that is being integrated and helping us do that. We're going to start to implement what we call SOX Lite, which is sort of a version of SOX around our financial reporting controls to further enhance those. We've started a process on that as well. So continue to build out the internal control framework. And then just continued development of our BSU resilience and our staff development as we take on these financial automation projects, you know, the needs. As we, you know, we want to transform the financial organization from being just a, you know, from more of a processing organization to a analytical business partnering decision support organization. So, you know, if it's 60% of the time is processing, 40% of the time is providing analytical support, you know, we want to flip that and have less time in the processing and more time in the analytics and support and providing more value add to the organization. So that's kind of what we're looking at ahead. And then, you know, just before we go on to it, in terms of, just in terms of financial climate we're in, we spoke about it, Finance Committee. We are in, you know, still uncertain times, given the various risk factors we had identified, and the emerging one being the impact of the banking, I call it, the banking turbulence that we see. Today, the Fed has already raised the rates as expected, a quarter, another quarter point, 25 basis points. And then we're speaking today about the banking situation. But it's clear in their remarks that they believe there will be a significant tightening of credit, tightening of liquidity that will probably do some more of the job that they were looking for rate increases to do. So it will have a slowing impact on the economy. It will probably move the probability of a recession higher. So we should be thinking about that and anticipating that in terms of what the financial outlook looks like as we look ahead towards the end of '23. Just on a risk update, you know, the resilience group continues to work on integrating the business continuity planning with disaster recovery and making sure that we have backup plans to provide manual workarounds in the event that, for whatever reason, our disaster recovery comes up short. If we had an event of any sort that would render our IT framework not available, so a lot of work is being done on that. You heard from Tom Spencer on the work he's doing on the dashboard and on the enterprise operational risk and finishing those assessments and providing better information to the senior managers, the board as well as to where we're progressing on our risk issues and getting our mitigation plan implemented and reducing risk throughout the organization. On the market side, as you heard from last Finance Committee, they've been focused on the creditworthiness of all of our counterparties that we encounter, given the events that we've been seeing over the last few weeks. So they've been, you know, focused on that and also reviewing a lot of our own internal models about how we look at hydro facilities in terms of the amount of water. It's, we're expecting to float through to create generation and what we impact the changes that would have on our revenues and our financial picture. So they've been diligently working on that as well. And on the insurance front, we submitted our package with the DFS, Department of Financial Services, for the captive. They've gone through it. They have some questions. We expect that we should get an approval, hopefully within the next 30 days, and we can start moving some of our coverages over there and start seeing the benefits of having that captive insurance in place. And we continue to update our renewals for other forms of insurance as well. So all of that seems to be going well. That's on the risk update. Now, the other thing we want to also mention...
All right, Adam. Adam, we need to tie this together. We're running a little long. So I want to ensure we can button this up. We've covered a lot of this between finance and audit. So can you button it up for us, please?
Sure. So, you know, as we said earlier, I think our financials from '22 are done. We're in good shape there. We've outlined what we need to do this year, looking forward, and what our ability to continue to implement our plan, even given the certain challenges that we have. And the other thing we just wanted to mention is that this year is the first year we will providing an integrated financial report, which is going to provide our ESG framework incorporated in our financial statements, an annual report that will tie together not only how we look from a financial standpoint, but the impact that our financials have both on our strategy and on our ESG program. Where are we going in terms of diversity, our emissions, our carbon footprint, and executing that sustainability plan that we have going forward? So that's a first for NIPA. It was a tremendous effort. What I put, kudos out to Kerry Jane King and her team, and Eve Noel and others that have supported the group to put this together. It was a tremendous effort we set out to do last year, and we're very proud of that. And I think when you go through it, we can go through the slides here real quick. As you have a chance to go through the report, I think you'll be pleased to see how it does tie together both our financial statements and our strategy as well as our sustainability plan. So in terms of tying it, it ties all of that together. And I think it's going to be very helpful for us to present to our customers, our employees, future employees, our investors, our bond rating agencies who have become focused on these issues as it relates to how they view NIPA. So I think it's a huge step forward for the organization, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, Adam, I think, you know, we've had a chance to look at this ahead of the meeting, and I would ask, in the interest of time, that as board members, we look at what you've presented, and if we have questions, come back at you. I'm just sensitive to, we're running a little long here, and we've lost half our crowd to begin, been with. So I would ask everyone to further your review of what you've already seen and questions and thoughts you have. You come back to, excuse me, to Adam and Kerry Jane. I'd appreciate that. Again, very comprehensive, Adam. So between finance audit and today, I think we got a good snapshot. We're in good hands, and you and the team continue to do a great job of steering us through some challenging economic and, you know, financial realities. So unless anyone has any other questions, I'd like to bring the meeting to a close. In doing so, I do want to acknowledge, since we were last together in February, one of our fellow trustees stepped down from the board, chose to resign, Tony Pacente. He's been with us since, I think, 2015, seven and a half, eight years. Been a very active participant and supporter of the work of NIPA. Been a consistent voice for his constituents in Oneida County in particular, but the Mohawk Valley upstate at large. So I want to take this time to acknowledge his service and wish him well in the years ahead. With that, unless there's anything else to come before us, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No moves.
Second.
Thank you very much, Dennis and Bee. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion substantively carried. Thanks very much, everyone. Appreciate your patience and tolerance for all the zigging and zagging today. Our next meeting is, I think, May 25th, just before the Memorial Day weekend, and we look forward to seeing everyone again then. Thanks so much. Have a great day. Appreciate it.